Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you could please take your seats. All right, can you hear me okay? Is that good? I'd like to call the special town meeting to order. And to begin, I would like to ask you to rise and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Whitsun States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask the town clerk to please read the call of the meeting.
Warning, notice of special town meeting of the town of Bethel, Connecticut. The legal voters of the town of Bethel, Connecticut, and those persons entitled to vote therein, are notified to assemble at a special town meeting to be held at the Bethel High School Auditorium, 300 Whittlesey Drive, Bethel, Connecticut, 06801, on Tuesday, October 10th, 2017, at 7:00 PM for the following purpose to wit. Number one, to consider and take action upon a recommendation of the Bethel Board of Selectmen and approved by the Bethel Board of Finance to appropriate and borrow the sum of $65,831,143 for the final planning, design, and construction to renovate as new with additions, the Anna H. Rockwell School, 400 Whittlesey Drive, Bethel, Connecticut, and the Ralph M.T. Johnson School, 500 Whittlesey Drive, Bethel, Connecticut, pursuant to the terms and conditions of the resolution approved by the Bethel Board of Finance on September 12th, 2017, which resolution, its terms and conditions is incorporated herein by reference as a part of this question. Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-7, the Bethel Board of Selectmen by resolution on September 29th, 2017, have removed this item number one, the funding to complete the final planning, design, and construction to renovate as new with additions, the Anna H. Rockwell School and the Ralph M.T. Johnson School, vote by the body of the special town meeting, and to adjourn this vote to a townwide machine vote to be held on the date as established by the body of the special town meeting between the hours of 12 o'clock noon and 8 o'clock PM, unless the body of the special town meeting approves earlier hours for the opening of the townwide machine vote pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-7. Design renderings of both the Anna H. Rockwell School and the Ralph M.T. Johnson School are available for review in the office of the Bethel Town Clerk during normal business hours at the Clifford J. Hergen Municipal Center, 1 School Street, Bethel, Connecticut. Number two, to take any and all legal action legally necessary or appropriate to accomplish the above intended results dated at Bethel, Connecticut this 29th day of September, 2017. Bethel Board of Selectmen Matthew S. Knickerbocker, First Selectman, Richard C. Strayton, Selectman, Paul R. Zakowski, Selectman.
Question from the chair.
Yes.
The resolution, the parts that we don't see and it's referenced, is there language in that part of the resolution which protects us, which nullifies this vote if we don't get state money?
Tell you what, let me, we have to have a motion to accept the resolution.
But we don't know what the resolution is.
There's a group of the actual resolution from the Board of Finance out on the table. If you want to get it, you can look at it yourself.
I'd like to know, because somebody asked it from the day before we vote, we're going to vote on a resolution that we don't know if there's a safety balance to protect us if there's no state money.
All right. To move this along, basically what the resolution says is that if they don't get grant money for the building, all right, that yes, it can end.
It can end.
It will end. It will end. The only, the only, the only thing is if you read it, once, once what happens is if it clears all of the main committees that are involved, and the only thing that's left to be done is to get it approved by the legislature. Once it clears all those other committees and organizations, $3 million will be released in order to start working on the plans and start working on that. Other than that, until and when it's finally approved by the legislature, no other monies will release. And the legislature, if they don't give us the monies, it ends. So the worst-case scenario is, is $3 million to start working on plans.
Martin, if they don't give us ECS money, does it end?
No, it does not.
This resolution. This resolution.
I did.
By incorporating something I referenced to Knickerbocker, I would like to hear that read publicly exactly what it is. We've seen this before. We've seen time and has to read all of the detail of bond issuances. We have not yet heard the resolution because we have not heard those parts incorporated by reference.
First thing you should know, this has been done by other towns. I researched this because I was very concerned in the beginning. And the reason why this has been done up this way is because the Board of Finance had some, you know, qualms about, you know, what would happen if we didn't get the state monies. So in any event, I'll read it for you. It's long, so hold on. This was, this was the resolution that was part of the funding resolution by the Board of Finance that was done on September 12th, 2017. And it reads, "As recommended by the Board of Selectmen, the town of Bethel, the town hereby appropriates, subject to the conditions set forth below, $65,831,143 for the costs associated with the design, planning, construction, and implementation of the renovation and expansion of the Anna H. Rockwell School." And then we have a total for the school is for the Anna Rockwell School is $24,723,432. And the Ralph M.T. Johnson School for a total of $41,107,711. The projects in accordance with the educational specifications of the Board of Education per preliminary designs provided by Perkins Eastman, as may be amended from time to time. Two, to fund such appropriation as recommended by the Board of Selectmen, the town shall borrow, subject to the conditions as set forth below, a sum not to exceed $65,831,143. Again, $24,723,432 for the Anna H. Rockwell School and $41,107,711 for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School, and issue bonds and bond anticipation notes for such indebtedness under its corporate name and backed by the full faith and credit of the town in the amount not to exceed such sum for the purposes of financing the appropriation for the projects. Three, such appropriation may be spent and borrowings made under such bonding authorization upon satisfactory, satisfaction of the following conditions. A, approval by a town referendum pursuant to C. 6-8 of the town charter. B, following approval of the town referendum and its I, or Roman numeral I, the sum of $3 million of such appropriation may be spent and $3 million borrowed under such borrowing, bonding authorization upon the Commissioner of Administrative Services preliminary approval of a state school grant for the projects in amount not less than 34% of the total appropriation of $65,831,143, which represents 31% of the appropriation for the Anna H. Rockwell School and 37% of the appropriation for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School. By placing it on a list of eligible projects to be submitted to the Governor, the Secretary of Office of Policy and Management, and the General Assembly, provided that such $3 million of the appropriation and bonding authorization shall be used solely for the planning, design, and bid documentation for Anna H. Rockwell School and Ralph M.T. Johnson School. Or B, the sum of $3 million of such appropriation may be spent and $3 million borrowed under such bonding authorization upon the Commissioner of Administrative Services preliminary approval of a state school grant solely for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School in amount of not less than 37% of the total appropriation of $41,107,711 for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School by placing on a list of eligible school projects to be submitted to the Governor, Secretary of Office, Secretary of the Office of Policy and Management, and the General Assembly, provided that such $3 million of the appropriation and bonding authorization shall be used solely for the planning, design, and bid documentation for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School. C, the remainder of the appropriation may be spent and the remainder of such borrowing authorization may be borrowed, Roman numeral I, upon such state school grant in amount of not less than 34% of the total appropriation of $65,831,143 being approved for projects both the Anna H. Rockwell School and the Ralph M.T. Johnson School by the State's General Assembly, or upon such state school grant in an amount not less than 37% of the total appropriation of $41,107,711 solely for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School being approved for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School by the State's General Assembly. Four, in the event the town receives a commitment for grant funding from the Commissioner of Administrative Services or receives approval from the State's General Assembly for grant funding, A, in the amount of not less than 34% of the total appropriation of $65,831,143 for the projects both the Anna H. Rockwell School and the Ralph M.T. Johnson School, or in the amount of not less than 37% of the total appropriation of $41,107,711 required for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School, then the First Selectmen, Town Treasurer, and the Comptroller will be appointed a committee with full power and authority to cause said bonds for the projects to be sold, issued, and delivered in an amount sufficient to cover the planning, design, and bid documentation in an amount not, not to exceed $3 million upon receipt of the Commissioner of Administrative Services commitment for grant funding of not less than 34% of the total appropriation of $65,831,143 for bonding amount when the State General Assembly approves the grant funding for an amount not less than 34% of the total appropriation of the $65,831,143 for both the Anna H. Rockwell School and the Ralph M.T. Johnson School, or the First Selectmen, Town Treasurer, and the Comptroller will be appointed a committee with full power and authority to cause said bonds solely for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School to be sold, issued, and delivered in amount sufficient to cover the planning, design, and bid documentation amount not to exceed $3 million upon receipt of the Commissioner of Administrative Services commitment for grant funding of not less than 37% of the total appropriation of $41,107,711 solely for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School in the balance of the bonding amount when the State General Assembly approves the grant funding for an amount of not less than 37% of the total appropriation of $41,107,711 solely for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School. Should the State General Assembly fail to approve the grant funding in the amount as set forth above for the projects, both the Anna H. Rockwell and the Ralph M.T. Johnson School on the grant funding for the amount as set forth above, solely for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School. The projects or the sole project of the Ralph M.T. Johnson School shall cease immediately and all work on the planning, design, and bid documentation shall be at an end, and said architect, artisans, and contractors employed for the planning, design, and bid documentation shall be paid for services rendered up to the date of notification of the issuance of a stop work order. In regards to said bonds, the committee shall determine their form, including provisions for redemption prior to maturity, to determine the aggregate principal amount thereof within the amount hereby authorized and the denominations and maturities thereof, to fix the time of issuance of each series thereof and the rate of rates of interest thereon as herein provided, to designate the bank or trust company to certify the issuance thereof and act as a transfer agent, paying agent, and as registrar for the bonds in the Designate Bond Council. The committee shall have all appropriate powers under the Connecticut General Statutes, including Chapter 748 Registered Public Organizations Act and Chapter 109 Municipal Bond Issues as presently enforced or subsequently amended, to issue the bonds, and further shall have full power and authority to do all that is required under the Internal Revenue Code of 1986, the code as amended, and other applicable laws of the United States, including the execution of certifications and agreements on behalf of the town with respect to compliance with the code to provide for issuance of the bonds in tax-exempt form and to meet all requirements which are or may become necessary in and subsequent to the issuance and delivery of the bonds to ensure that the interests on the bonds be and remain exempt from federal income taxes, including without limitation to covenant and agree to restriction on investment yield, rebate of arbitrage earnings, expenditure of proceeds within required time limitations, and the filing of information reports as and when required. Five, the bonds may be designated public improvement bonds of the town of Bethel or other such name as designated by the committee, series of the year of their issuance, and may be issued one or more series, or may be consolidated as part of the same issue with other bonds of the town. Shall be in a serial form maturing over a period of time designated by the committee subject to state statute, but not more than 30 annual installments of principal, the first installment to mature not later than two years from the date of issue, and the last installment to mature not later than 30 years therefrom, or otherwise this may be provided by statute. The bonds may be sold at not less than par in accrued interest at public sale upon invitation for bids to the reasonable bidder submitting the bid resulting in the lowest net interest cost to the town, provided that nothing herein shall prevent the town from rejecting all bids submitted in response to any one invitation for bids, and the right to so reject all bids is hereby reserved, and further provided that the committee may sell bonds or notes on a negotiated basis as provided by statute. Interest on the bonds shall be payable semi-annually or annually. The bonds shall be signed on behalf of the town by at least a majority of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Treasurer, and shall bear the seal of the town. The signing, sealing, and certification of said bonds may be by fax as provided by statute. The Town Treasurer may maintain a record of bonds issued pursuant to this resolution and of the face amount thereof outstanding from time to time, and shall certify to the destruction of said bonds or notes after they've been paid and canceled, and such certification shall be kept on file with the Town Clerk. The committee is further authorized to make temporary borrowing as permitted by the General Statutes and to issue a temporary note or notes of the town in anticipation of the receipt of proceeds from the sale of the bonds to be issued pursuant to this resolution. Such notes shall be issued and renewed at such times and with such maturities, requirements, and limitations as provided by statute. Notes evidencing such borrowing shall be signed by the First Selectmen and Town Treasurer and shall have the seal of the town affixed, which signing and sealing may be by fax as provided by statute, be certified by and payable at a bank or trust company incorporated under the laws of this or any other state or of the United States, be approved as to their legality by bond council, and may be consolidated with the issuance of other town notes. The committee shall determine the date, maturity, interest rates, form, and manner of sale, including negotiated sale, and other details of said notes consistent with the provisions of this resolution and the General Statutes, and shall have all of the powers and authorities set forth above in connection with the issuance of the bonds and especially with respect to compliance with the requirements of the code in order to obtain and maintain its tax-exempt form. Seven, upon the sale and issuance of the bonds authorized by the resolution, the proceeds thereof, including any premium received upon the sale thereof, accrued interest received at delivery, and interest earned on the temporary investment of such proceeds shall be applied forthwith to the payment of the principal and interest of all notes issued in anticipation thereof, or shall be deposited in trust for such purposes with a bank or trust company, or shall be applied or rebated as may be required under the provisions of law. The remainder of the proceeds, if any, after the payment of said notes and of the expense of issuing said notes and bonds, shall be applied to further finance the appropriation made by the appropriation resolution enacted concurrently therewith, or herewith. Eight, in each fiscal year in which the principal or any installment of interest shall fall due upon any of the bonds or notes herein authorized, there shall be included in the appropriation for such fiscal year a sum equivalent to the amount of such principal and interest so falling due, and to the extent that provision is not made for the payment thereof from other revenues, the amount thereof shall be included in the taxes assessed upon the grand list for such fiscal year and shall not be subject to any limitation of taxes that may be imposed by any other town ordinance or resolution. Nine, pursuant to the regulation of the Internal Revenue Service, the town hereby expresses its official intent to reimburse expenditures paid from the general fund, fund balance, or capital improvement fund for the aforementioned projects and/or solely for the Ralph M.T. Johnson School with the proceeds of the bonds or notes to be issued under the provisions of this resolution. The allocation of such reimbursement of bond proceeds for an expenditure shall occur not later than one year after the, the later of A, the date in which the expenditure is paid, or B, the date in which the projects and/or solely the Ralph M.T. Johnson School are placed in service or for extended periods and in such manner as may be permitted by amendments to the regulations. The comptroller is authorized to pay expenses for the projects or for the sole Ralph M.T. Johnson School project in accordance herewith pending the issuance of reimbursement bonds or notes. Ten, the First Selectmen and/or the Superintendent of Bethel Schools is hereby authorized to apply for and accept any available private, state, or federal grant in aid of the financing of the projects or the sole project of the Ralph M.T. Johnson School, and to take all action necessary in property proper in connection therewith. Eleven, the amount of final issuance of the bonds shall be reduced by the amount of funds that may be received from any direct private, state, or federal grants, if any. The committee is hereby authorized to take all action necessary and proper for the sale, issuance, and delivery of the bonds and notes in accordance with the provisions of the Connecticut General Statutes and the laws of the United States.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, the town clerk has read the... The town attorney has read the resolution, and the town clerk has read the call of the meeting. I'll entertain a motion to accept the call of the meeting. Okay, it's moved and seconded. Did you get that, Lisa?
Yeah, Larry, and who else?
Those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next order of business is election of a moderator. The floor is open for nominations. Yes, Mrs. Hutch. Okay, Matt Knickerbocker, and seconded. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Any other nominations? Hearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Thank you very much. Nominations are officially closed. I'd like to ask Town Council to read the first resolution, please.
Shall the town of Bethel, as recommended by the Board of Selectmen and approved by the Board of Finance, appropriate and borrow the sum of $65,831,143 for the final planning, design, and construction to renovate as new with additions, the Anna H. Rockwell School, 400 Whittlesey Drive, Bethel, Connecticut, and the Ralph M.T. Johnson School, 500 Whittlesey Drive, Bethel, Connecticut, pursuant to the terms and conditions of the resolution approved by the Bethel Board of Finance on September 12th, 2017, which resolution, its terms and conditions is incorporated herein by reference as part of this question.
Thank you. As a reminder, there will be no vote on this resolution because pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-7, the Board of Selectmen removed this from the call of the meeting for a machine vote. But the floor is open for comments or questions. Yes, please state your name for the record and address.
David Galan, 9 Elizabeth Street, Bethel. I just have one question. Seeing that there is no state budget, the state is disarray, we don't know what kind of money is coming to the town, can we postpone this meeting to recess until we have a state budget and know what we're dealing with? Right now, everything is up in the air. In common sense, you're going to vote on what you don't know. Doesn't make sense.
Yes, Dr. Carver?
Unfortunately, we are on the timeline. To be placed on the priority school district list, which happens on December 15th, you have to have all of the, all of the items for the school application grant, which includes a past referendum, and our deadline unfortunately is November 15th. So I hear it's not ideal, but that's the timeline set by the state. If we don't meet that timeline, then we will not be subject to the current guidelines in terms of state reimbursement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Hillman, 86 Walnut Hill Road. And first, thank you to our Town Council for reading the entire resolution, however lengthy. This is Bethel, it's not other towns. I have the call, on one hand, roughly $42 million after state reimbursements, if we get them, and on the other hand, I have a breakout of the costs of not doing the renovations. The cost of not doing the renovations come to about $29 million, of which Dr. Carver has indicated in private conversations with me, roughly $25 million is the true cost. Some $4 million is possibly subject, or 15% of some of these items, subject to state reimbursements. So we have a situation of getting an equivalent to a new car versus patching together an old car. There's a difference in timing. This project would be completed in 2021. The patchwork repairs, according to this schedule, don't start until 2021 and continue on until 2027. So one of the things we as people have to do is put ourselves ahead 10 years and look back and see what we have. In one case, we've got an equivalent to new building, and you can look at Berry to see what that might look like. On the other hand, we have something that's still a piece of junk that needs to be replaced. So from a pure return on investment point of view, renovation makes more sense. I have a third piece of paper in my hand that represents the sword of Damocles over our head that was just referred to by the prior speaker. We don't know what's going to happen with the state budget. An $8 million shortfall could mean a 12% supplemental tax bill for some of us, or it could mean any combination of significant and drastic cutbacks in programs, furloughs, layoffs. One saving grace, though, is hopefully, the state legislator and its wise leaders will do something. May not be this month. It may not be next month. This third piece of paper that I'm holding is part of the resolution we voted on for the town budget back a few months ago. Included in that was authorization to borrow up to $6 million for tax anticipation notes. That's not something that we borrow and don't pay back, but if, for instance, in October, we're not getting $2 million as long as there's no budget, roughly a quarter of the amount due, it is conceivable that the town could use this credit card and pay it all off a little bit later under the conditions of A, we actually get ECS funding, which is retroactive, or B, the Board of Finance has to issue supplemental tax bills. It could be one supplemental tax bill, it could be two or three, and God forbid, it's a large number. I would hope this enables the wisdom to spread those payments out, because there's people in this audience hurting. They can't afford a $1,000 bill all at once. They honestly can't afford $350 bills. So that's kind of the sword of Damocles for next week. So on one hand, you've got the emotion of, oh my goodness, we've got this thing with the state hanging over our head. There is a way, and confirmed by our Town Controller and our Town Council, that we could use this credit card to stall some of the impacts for a period of time. Hopefully, we'll get a budget, but on a pure ROI basis, just ROI, it does make more sense to renovate than to patchwork. But it's going to be up to the folks here in this room and out in the town next Tuesday to decide what they want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barb Costello, 11 Old Lookout Way. Just as a common, everyday citizen, I'm just looking at this on dollars and cents, and right now, our country is $22 trillion in debt. All I heard with that resolution was notes, debt, borrowing, borrowing, you know, long-term debt responsibilities that will come due eventually and all that. I moved to Bethel five years ago from Ridgefield. In Ridgefield, I had a single-family home, unattached, with over an acre of land. I pay more taxes in Bethel, Connecticut, right now, in attached townhouse than I did in Ridgefield when we left five years ago. Something isn't right, and we have the highest mill rate, I think, of any town around. So I don't know where all this money is going, but I think even if you look at the fiscal condition of the state, the state, I believe, is one of the top five states on the verge of bankruptcy. They have cut school funding from Hartford now. I don't know about Bethel, but I know that surrounding towns are not getting the million dollars from the state anymore. Okay? I think that what we could do is just shell this for at least a year to find out where fiscally we're going as a country and as a state, because leaving our kids as debt slaves is not a good thing. You don't want your kids saddled with this debt. To have a beautiful building and have children get out and have to pay the bills... To have a beautiful building and have children get out and have to pay the bills that we have accrued for them is not justification for this project.
Lawrence Bocari, 102 Rockwell. We have two choices. We can either pay to renovate our schools now or spend $29 million and then pay $70 million five or 10 years from now to still replace the schools. That doesn't make any sense to me. If we wait and miss our opportunity now, we're going to be further in debt. And personally, I invested in my home. Our youngest is now off to college. In five years, I might want to downsize. I want my home to be worth more, not less. The biggest magnet, the biggest driver of home prices is the education system. If we don't have a top-notch education system, we can't sell our homes, we can't run our town, and we can't provide for our children. So, I urge you to support the resolution.
Cynthia McCorkindale, 19, Elgin Avenue. And our kids won't be debt slaves because they're all leaving the state. It has, Connecticut has the highest number of ages 29 to 45, and thousands of them with advanced degrees, so maybe they won't have to pay. I just have comments. It has nothing to do with pro or con the project. I fully believe that this is a necessary project. We need this. I actually voted yes to push it to the public hearing. But here's my issue. I would bet that the people who are employees of the school and very connected to the school probably know much more about this than people who are not plugged into the school. And here's what I tried to avoid at the Board of Finance meeting on September 12th. Before the motion went on the table, I said, you know what? I'm willing, I want to vote yes for this, but I have a couple of concerns. One of them is, I believe that we should have two special Board of Finance meetings before the town meeting so that we can carry on this discussion. So, we scheduled those two meetings. On Friday, before the special meeting was to occur on Monday, the board chair canceled that meeting, saying, we don't have any new information. What's the point? But guess what? We did have new information, because that was the day after the state, the Senate and the House, approved the GOP budget, and it was hanging in a balance for a veto from the governor. So, that didn't happen. I asked for an information meeting and a public hearing to take place before the town meeting. No problem. That's what was told me. That never happened. And here's the kicker. The notification to all, specifically asked that a notification, not the referendum notification, but a notification to all the residents of Bethel about this project and the details of this project, a synopsis, if you will, so that everyone can be on the same playing field. I saw so much communication, and you know, people can go to the school website, that's absolutely true, but a lot of people aren't plugged in to know that. I think it is incumbent on the town administration to make sure that everyone is informed. Dr. Carver said, sure, I'll write a letter with Mr. Nickerbacher. Okay, that did happen, but it never got sent out to anybody. It was copied and brought to the public hearing, and then maybe it was posted on the website. I don't know. As far as the resolution goes, I looked everywhere to find that resolution. I dug through my packet from the Board of Finance, I copied it, updated the numbers in Adobe Acrobat, and posted it on my Facebook page, saying, you know, this is really important. Could you please, you know, if you want to read this, read it? So, that's the problem for me. When, and this is, you know, when passionate intention is combined with blatant disregard, it's a very bad mix. I feel that the taxpayers were disregarded. I know, Dr. Carver and Mrs. Jonsky did so much work, they were going, because they're passionate. I understand that. But where is the commitment to notify and inform the taxpayer at large? You know, school is a critical part of any community, but it is not the only part of a community. End of story. It's just not. There are other people. There are people who make less than $70,000 a year. There are people who are in default on their mortgages, and they're going to get supplemental tax bills. So, I have that comment. I am, this is the most disappointing process that I've been through as an elected official, that three balls were dropped, that I specifically asked for, got agreement on, and then I voted yes, and it didn't happen.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Good evening here. Billy Michael, 27 and 1/2 Fleetwood Avenue. There's a lot of passion for this. This is the biggest project that I've ever seen in Bethel, $65 million. We've never seen more money put forth to the people of Bethel on a referendum and have less certainty. I would like to know, we have ECS money. Where is it right now? We supposed to get money, and I'm told, and you can correct me, before the, for the town, do we get our money in October?
End of October.
It's my understanding that currently, we're under the executive order, so we won't get the check in October unless the state passes a budget. And it typically comes mid to end of October, but I'll defer to Mr. Kozlowski. I've been in contact with both Senator Boucher and Mr. Harding today, Representative Harding, and both assured me that the talks actually now are progressing, whereas they hadn't been in the past. So, we're hoping that in the next few weeks, we will know something more on ECS.
And are there other, are there other amounts of money that are not coming down to us? You had a big article about English learners' budget casualty in the paper. I just saw this, this is October 2nd. It said, you said, "Schools like Bethel aren't getting the money now."
No, that's federal money, Mr. Michael. So, we do get Title III, which is a Title III grant, that is coming to Bethel.
Why did it say budget casualty? It says the...
I'm not sure. I didn't read the article.
Oh, he has a whole list of things that...
I cannot too well.
Now, tell me this.
Mr. Michael, I can answer that question. So, in anticipation of the state not having a budget, we did take steps in the Bethel Public Schools. We have held numerous positions open and not filled them, and one of them was scheduled to be an ELL certified teacher, and we did not fill that. We have almost $700,000 of salaries open because we were anticipating a cut. We don't know how much the cut will be, but in anticipation of a cut, there were many positions we didn't fill, and that was one. And I believe that's the position they're referring to in that article.
This article?
Yes.
And as this article was talking about, the demographics, are we becoming a poorer school? Are our schools poorer?
Poor?
Yeah, we poor.
Does it mean the number of free students that qualify for free and reduced lunch? Is that what you're referring to?
Sneakers, free lunch, school supplies, food. You know, I'm saying, are we, are we becoming poorer?
Well, on a relative basis, compared to the other districts throughout the state of Connecticut, Bethel has actually risen up in its ranking compared, on a comparable basis. So, that's...
Rising up, less poor or more poor?
No, more wealthy. So, we've gone up in our wealth ranking. But I will tell you, at the same time, we, our free-reduced population is just a hair over 20%. So, there are different measurements that each could tell a different story.
What is the trend? It's over 20%. What was it two years ago?
It was roughly the same. So, since 2007 is when we started to see an increase, but it's been between 19 and 20% for the past few years that I've been here.
Because when the Social Services Director made her bid to become a full-time social service director in this year's budget, the presentation that she gave painted a picture of a Bethel that nobody in this room would imagine. Everything from the food pantry to, I said, all those federal programs. I mean, it was astounding how many more people from, like, when the distributed food for needy people goes from 33,000 pounds to 89,000 pounds. It just seems like there's two worlds that are going on. There's a lot of people that are not doing well in this town, and some that are doing very well, and coming from affluent areas and find us quite inexpensive to live in. Question through the chair from Mr. Kozlowski. What would the average tax increase be as a mill? We went through this last time. There may be some new numbers, because in the resolution, Mr. Lawler was saying 34% and 37% is a minimum, right? A minimum. I always thought that we were going to get 45%. Did that number change? Because I didn't hear any 45% in the resolution.
The 45% is of eligible cost. So, we explained in the presentation at the public hearing and at several of the other sessions that we did hold, that there are eligible costs and ineligible costs. And so, when you look at the difference between the two, it gets to that 30%.
Are these debatable? Could the state come back and say to Bethel, these are eligible? We've changed our criteria, our protocols. We have a $3.5 billion budget deficit.
I think Ken is probably the best, Ken Bieger from ONG is the best person to answer that question.
Okay. Yeah, let me see if I can answer for you. Right now, if you meet the date and submit by the 15th of November, you're under the guidelines that currently exist. What happens afterwards? It could change, but you still, they have to follow the guidelines, what is incorporated right now. So, they can't change that. The issue always comes up, okay, you know, is your school going to be pulled off the priority list, too? That's always a question. I was up there at the state last week, and they talked about, there's one school supposedly going to take off the priority list, and that's New Lebanon, excuse me, New Lebanon School in Greenwich. That one's going to be pulled off the priority list. All the other schools will remain.
But we, but the question is, things don't change? Like, you trust, you trust that things aren't going to change in this climate that we're in, the state? We're in a completely, we're in a death spiral economically, and you don't think things are going to change? We have new realities from the state reimbursements?
No. I think you are locked into the current law.
We're locked in?
Yes.
Well, that's great to hear. I'm glad, I don't believe it. I don't believe what you're telling us. I think that the state is going to make, give us a lot less money. But back to the average homeowner, what is, what's the average mill rate for the 20-year bond? What does that do? What does it add?
The cost per year would be $269 on today's mill rate calculation.
And today's mill rate, what is the value of a mill right now?
About 1.83.
1.83 million. And the average homeowner, that is, what is an average mill to the $269,000 average house?
It's going to be one, about one and a quarter.
$125?
A $217,000 home.
Okay. And what?
217.
217? 217? All right. Well, I've seen Bethel lose $485 million worth of value in the 2007 to 2011 revaluation. There's people in here, like me, that enjoyed a 9% decline in my taxes, as many of us did in the older, poorer houses, and there are people in this room that paid for that, subsidized our tax break, and their taxes went through the ceiling. We're in a ref, we're in a revale right now, and those people could enjoy another blast. It seems to me that all reason has been thrown aside because we want to do the best for our children. We really do. But when you are spending money like water in a state is underwater, and the children that speak here, they can't afford to live here when they're adults. We love our children so much, but once they're out in, once they're out of school, all of a sudden, they have to flee. They, we create a world for them with our best intentions that they cannot live in. It's a Bethel they can't stay in. So, I'm going to say, I'm voting strongly against this. I'm going to vote against every aspect of this. And the, I'll leave you with this, because I think it's a misallocation of money. We're an aging town and an aging state. We're, our average age now, where our median age is somewhere around 46 and going up. And when the Danbury News Times warned of this meeting, here's the little tiny meeting warning, nobody knows it. People in the bars and restaurants don't even know there's a meeting going on tonight. Parents of school-aged children all know. But the funniest thing was, here's the little warning of the meeting, and this is really where the Connecticut is headed. There's a half-page ad, "The antidote for adult diaper anxiety." This is for try men's liberty. It's covered by Medicare. This is where we're aging. When you see a half-page ad for men's diapers, don't you know the state you're living in and see what's going on with the age wave here? So, I will leave you, I urge everybody to get out, get your friends, call your friends, and tell them to vote no, and make the referendum from 6:00 a.m. Let's all vote no. Stop this madness.
Amy Mannion, 13 Van Camp and Lane. I attended Johnson School a long time ago. It still looks like it did when I was there. I am a child of Bethel, and I still live here. Some of us do stay. I have children that attend Rockwell and Johnson School, and I fully support the renovations and will absolutely vote in favor of them. Thank you.
Bob Cernick, 45, Old 45 Hill Road. I haven't been keeping up with this, but I heard that we were going to referendum on a $65 million project. Is that what it is? And I just heard that it's going to cost me 200, the average household, $217 a year.
$269.
$269. At this, relative to this year's mill rate. It's a 20-year situation, so based on the average 2% or 3% or 4% tax increase, it's going to go up with that as well, obviously. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
One of the reasons I'm here is that I know that there might be a supplemental tax bill to cover the $8 million shortfall, for want of a better word. What's the average hit per household on that $8 million shortfall if the state doesn't back off?
Well, if you were to look at $8.2 million that the state would not fund us, that would equate to about $950.
Right. And that's not a one-time hit. That would be the ongoing increase, starting with this year.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. So, I'm faced basically with about $1,000 supplemental, you know, tax bill, and then an additional $1,000 on top of my taxes from here on in, because the state, obviously, is bankrupt, for want of a better word. Now, what assurance is do we...
Mr. Kozlowski, do we have, he's saying that we're going to get $1,000 more for his taxes for the next odd number of years. Do you have any evidence of that?
We don't. We don't know what the state's going to do. It's a, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, you don't have a crystal ball.
Right, but at this point in time...
Even if we were to receive an $8 million cut from the state, there's things that the town and the Board of Education are working on right now to mitigate that effect to the taxpayers.
Right, but it's not going to, you know, I've had a couple of conversations, and I've been around for a while. It's not going to mitigate an $8 million shortfall. There's no way you can take $8 million out of the fund balance, just to clarify that issue. There's no way you guys would go that route, even though it's a rainy day fund. And there's no way you guys are going to cut $8 million out of the school budget because you'd be hanging from a tree. So, the bottom line is, it's going to come to the taxpayer. I've been around here long enough to know how this flows. And I'm not criticizing that move, if it happens, because it's out of our control. But it contributes to my conversation in the fact that I am here tonight because I thought it was bad enough that I had to worry about $1,000 increase in my taxes that I wasn't anticipating. But then I find out that there's a $65 million two-school renovation going on, and I know nothing about it. I'm actually surprised that this place isn't full, because it's the largest referendum that this town has ever had, and I know that for a fact. And I would be, I would, I was shocked that there aren't more residents here, because if the residents knew what was facing them, they would want to be here and to express their opinions or at least get more information. And the fact that I, as John Q. voter at this point in time, because I haven't attended any of the other meetings, and I was on the last high school renovation project, so I... any of the other meetings and I was on the last high school renovation project, so I do know a bit about the process of information, I'm a little shocked that I don't know anything. And in essence, you're asking the community to vote for Pig in a Poke. I've got, at this point in time, I'm actually shocked furthermore, that you guys don't respect the voter enough to have given them a proposal. You're asking the voters to come up with this, you know, a yes on a sixty-five-million-dollar proposal and we're the shareholders in this town. Who's the superintendent? That's all little I know right now. You are? Okay. What's your first name?
Are you kidding?
What's your first name?
Christine Carver.
Christine, okay. I'm shocked that the town didn't go and practice due diligence to send out some sort of flyer, at the very least, outlining what we're getting for our money and what the process is. And also, why are we doing two schools at once? You know, again... I'm voter, so I'm entitled to ask these questions and the taxpayers, so timeout.
I'm going to ask, these have been, it's available online, there've been many months' worth of meetings, presentations. I'm going to ask Mr. Krabus, would you want to comment to that briefly?
Well, I do want, I, as a voter, I think you would respect giving me an answer. I think.
I did. I have no idea where you have been.
No, no, no. Okay. I've been, I've been under the same, okay, I would like, I would invite you to take that comment back, because what you're doing, you're talking to most of the voters in this town who don't know about this proposal.
I'm talking to Bob Cernick.
You are talking to Bob Cernick, but Bob Cernick has not been at the meetings, as have not most of the voters.
Gentlemen, we're not going to have a debate about it.
Well, I know, but I don't, I don't like the comment. Don't talk down to me. Give me an answer. Why are we doing two schools at once?
Because it is economically better for the town. This year is the only year that we are looking at this kind of a reimbursement from the state. We already know going forward, given the financial condition of the state, that things are going to change. There's four-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars set aside for school renovation. We have worked exceptionally hard to make sure that we get on that priority list and we have a pretty good assurance that that's going to happen. And this is the best time. Your choice is, as a taxpayer, to trust the work that we have done and go forward with this or look over time that you will be spending twenty-nine million dollars on things that are not going to get any better. You will have an old car with new tires and maybe a new battery, but you still have an old car. This board, the elected Board of Education, has a responsibility for schools. We work with the administration to make sure that we have the educational specs and the forward thinking of what we need to take care of us for the next thirty to forty years. That has been our goal. These are assets of the town that as a Board of Education, the elected Board of Education, we are responsible for maintaining. We are responsible for whatever we do, that we do it in a way that we make these assets valuable over the next thirty to forty years. And all we have been doing is patching things and that makes no sense. Patching, again, over the amount of time that we would be bonding money for a renovation is upwards of twenty-nine million dollars. And what do we have?
Well, okay, then, let me just say, let me just respond by asking you, don't you think you also have the responsibility to communicate in a fiscally responsible manner, the rationale and the details of a sixty-five-million-dollar school renovation, as with any renovation project in the past?
I believe we have done that.
I've been used to that. Now, you haven't, because I haven't received any information in my mailbox. I haven't received anything. I'm here literally out of the loop and I feel like I'm speaking for thousands of voters that are just totally out of the loop.
If I can interrupt, gentlemen, Mr. Cernick, you're absolutely right. As a voter, you do deserve that information. As a practical matter, we really, we cannot, it's impossible to go through the entire presentation. It's been done many times.
No, I'm not asking for that.
No, no, wait, please.
I'm not asking for that here. I know that.
Dr. Carver, is the, is the presentation still up on the Board of Ed website?
It is, but it may be taken down depending upon the town meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Because we have to take it down.
Well, here's my concern. You know, someone, based on the crowd, it's pretty obvious we're going to go to referendum on this thing. And what are you guys going to do between now and the referendum date to communicate and educate all the voters, not just the school lobby, as to this project? Because you, you need far more money from all the other voters, the non-parent holders, than you do from the parents. You need support from all sides. And frankly, that, you know, it just grates at me, because I'm, I'm used to a different process. When I was active in the political scene, the process was far more transparent, far more communicative. And I'm shocked that I have not absolutely seen this. I don't know what I'm voting for. You would do the same. This is as common, this is as common as sense gets, as far as a sixty-five-million-dollar proposal. And as far as I'm concerned, right now, I've got, unless you guys do something in the next week or two, I've got sixty-five million reasons not to vote for it. Not because I'm not in support of renovating the schools, because they all have to be renovated, but because in light of the fact that we have an eight-million-dollar situation that you guys can't even control and telling me that it's not going to happen, we don't know what's going to happen or not, but right now, it looks like it's not going to happen, because you can't create money out of air. So, I'm looking at a thousand-dollar tax bill and now I'm looking at two-hundred-and-fifty-plus or two, in my bracket, three-hundred dollars plus on top of that on a forward basis, thirteen-hundred dollars on a forward basis. That's my nut. That's the decision that I, as the taxpayer, has to decide on, as to whether I want to increase that, given the fact that I don't know what's happening with the thousand dollars that I have to pay. And correct me if I'm wrong, for Selectman, that's already been approved, so we can't even come back and have a referendum on that quote-unquote "eight-million-dollar shortfall." Or, I'll defer to the town attorney, because we've been through this once before, about thirty years ago. Can we actually have a referendum, given the petition signatures or whatever, to vote whether or not to actually even allow you guys to have to do that? Or did we vote on it already?
Yeah, go ahead.
To my knowledge, you're correct. We can't have another referendum on the, the budget's already been set. The only thing that could be done is the monies don't have to be spent.
Right, okay. So, that's another concern I have. We don't even have a chance to unravel that. It's totally out of our hands. So, I love the fact that you're tenacious about advancing the entire school community. I'm rather impressed by what I saw when I drove in. I have no problem with all that, but I do have a problem, and I know time is, we have time, we have money, we have time. I do have a problem with not, the community not being made aware of. With respect to the fact that you're elected officials, you have a fiduciary responsibility to really present this to the community and flush it out, as we've done with other much smaller projects. So, all I'm saying is that, right now, I'm not comfortable voting yes on this project, because I don't know what I'm voting for. And we're not going to settle it tonight, obviously. So, you have a week to figure it out theoretically, okay? And all I'm asking you to do is do your duty and educate the community, because if we, if this goes through and I have to pay another thousand on top of it and I don't know what I'm voting for, it's just a bad standard. It's a bad precedent, because in the past, we fought tooth and nail when things weren't communicated properly. And I was at those sessions and I saw how passionate people were about getting the information, because the people on the dais and the elected officials had enough respect for the voters to say, "Hey, listen, I don't expect John or Jane to vote for this sight unseen." And that's what you're asking us to do, as far as I'm concerned.
One final comment from me. I remember you sitting in the audience when Gary Chesley presented the first stab at renovating Johnson and Rockwell in two thousand twelve. This project started in two thousand ten. You were sitting there. It got a lot better going through where we are today, so don't tell me you have never heard about this.
No, I, I have...
You have not taken the opportunity.
No, 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 no. Larry, Larry, I know that you don't like me, because it's obvious by what you're trying to accuse me of doing. I don't remember being in a meeting in two, in two thousand twelve. No, call the order, because I feel like I'm being attacked here. The bottom line is, I don't know what happened in two thousand twelve. I'm glad that you're keeping up with my whereabouts, because I don't know where I was in two thousand twelve.
You were sitting right over there with Mr. Burke.
I hope, I hope you know that, because the bottom line is, the bottom line is, in two thousand twelve, that particular project was discussed in a very general way. They weren't looking at doing four buildings.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, please.
Well, I didn't start this.
I understand that.
He brought it up. He brought it up. I don't know why. It embarrassed me, apparently.
I'm going to ask you to both, please.
Okay.
Okay, one person at a time and we are not going to debate this.
No, we're not. Ask him not to try and embarrass people on the floor.
I understand that. You've made your point clear.
That's not true either.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Cernick.
The bottom line is this, okay? I don't know what I'm voting for. A lot of people don't know what they're voting for.
Mr. Cernick.
And that's it.
Thank you.
Hi, Kathleen Quater, Sixth Shelter Rock. First of all, Dr. Carver, I'd like to thank you for your transparency. Thank you for all the meetings that you've held. Thank you for having it on our website. Thank you for explaining it. Thank you for talking about it at your bi-monthly Board of Ed meetings, that everyone in our community is welcome to attend. Thank you for always showing us what the money is being spent on, how it's being spent. Thank you for making the best cuts that you can in doing both schools together, so that it's better for us financially as a town. So, I just want to thank you for all that you've put into the project. I teach in Bethel, so yes, I may be kissing the butt of my superintendent a little, I'll say it. However, but I'm also a taxpayer, so now I want to talk to you as a taxpayer. I can't afford this either. However, I have a responsibility. If my roof is not working on my house, I need to get my roof fixed. And our schools are not working. They're not twenty-first-century buildings. They're not good for our children. They're not good for the staff. And as responsible Bethel citizens, it is our responsibility to make sure that our children are getting the best education that they can get. Ignorance, unfortunately, to say that you're not aware of these projects, shame on you, because they've been out there. And Mr. Michael, you complained that it's only a quarter of a page.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Quater.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Please address the chair.
I heard a complaint. I apologize. I'll talk this way. But I heard that there was a complaint that there was only a quarter of a page.
Okay, I understand.
If there was a half a page, there'd be a complaint.
I understand.
If there was a full page.
I'm going to ask...
So, I'm just saying, I don't think that we'll be happy, no matter what the page is.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask all speakers to please address the chair.
Sorry.
And please do not address other people in the audience. The comments are to be directed up here on the project alone. Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I would just like to say that I wholeheartedly vote yes for this project and thank you all for all you've done for it.
Alice Hutchinson, twenty-five Grand Street. I'm not going to repeat what Kathleen just said, because I was going to say exactly the same thing. But what I am going to say is, I don't have children in the school system and I've known about this project for many years. I have watched it unfold. I have not come to Board of Ed meetings, but the public meeting that I came to was very comprehensive. It explained the project well. I've had access to materials. One question I do have, are you sending out the postcard to remind people to vote? If I was completely unaware of any social media, had no kids in the school system, that would send me to the library or town hall. That notice alone goes to every household and every voter in Bethel will get a notice of a referendum. They then have the time to go find out what they need to find out and can vote either way, because at the bottom line in all of this, we have a choice. My choice is to fix the leaky roof and the broken this and the broken that, because the way that you have compiled this project is cost-effective. It is responsible, it is thoughtful, it is presented openly with transparency. So, if I got that, not knowing anything, I would then take the time to find out. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
Nick Hoffman, nineteen Sandhill Road. As both a member of the Bethel Board of Education and the Ad-How Committee for the renovations, I want to clear up some misstatements this evening. This was an incredibly transparent process. It's been going on for about fifteen months. It's been one of the goals we assigned to Dr. Carver prior to the even hiring process. This is something we've been talking about for over a decade and under Dr. Carver and Teriyansky's leadership. Our wish has become an executable goal. We have the ability now to take our schools at a reimbursement rate that we'll never see again, if we don't pass this referendum next week. So, we're concerned about mill rate increase and taxes increasing. We'll kick the can down the road and put some Band-Aids on our schools, knowing that as this increases, the same project, four to six percent a year, as it increases, when we revisit this in five years or ten years, we're putting that burden on the same taxpayers we're trying to protect now, but at a massive rate, a rate that could potentially collapse them. So, this, from my perspective, and I've suffered through the angst of the absence of ECS funding, it's not a situation any of us on the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen are really jolly about. It's not really exciting when we did our job seven months ago and are waiting for the folks in Hartford to do theirs, three months after they were due to do it. It's a frustrating process. It's not ideal, but to not bring this project to the minds of the voters and the taxpayers of Bethel is failing our community. It's the most sound, fiscally responsible choice we can make. Thank you.
Hi, Anna Maria Jones, Hifin George, nine Hopkins Court in Timber Oaks. I moved here about five years ago, after doing a lot of research with my husband. We were looking to move to a community that offered a top-notch quality education system for our son. We looked at the fact that Bethel offers Circle of Friends teachers that have two master's degrees and teachers that are required to have very, a very good education. We took all these things into consideration, specifically the Department of Education's commitment to making sure that the children are very well-educated and have good teachers and good schools to provide that service with for our children. Most of my neighbors have moved here for that reason as well. And if they were to be aware of the structural issues or anyone else or any other issues that are occurring, for example, in Johnson, they might think about it. I might think, I might have think about it twice. So, you really have to take it into consideration when you're building all these homes and you're inviting people to move to Bethel, what you're asking them to do. They want to move here because of the school system. If you take that away, you're not going to be as attractive. So, I thank the Department of Education for everything that you're doing and I hope that everyone votes yes. I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Jessica Nobles, twenty-seven Kevi Avenue. I didn't hear your last name. Jessica Nobles, N-O-B-L-E-S. Thanks. I just wanted to thank for a moment the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance and the first Selectmen, sorry, and everyone else who's been involved, because I was actually not living in the country until about two months ago and all of this information found its way to me. So, I knew about the project and I knew about how it was going and I knew when the meetings were and it's been very open and transparent and I just wanted to thank you all for that, because if it found me across an ocean, it should be very easy for people in town to find it.
Hi, Kim Romero, one fourteen Chestnut Ridge Road. I'm going to reiterate some of what I said at the town meeting on September twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, and I want to just also say that, you know, I had enough information on that town meeting to come, so to come to the referendum, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I want to reiterate the fact that we did have a town meeting on that day. I'm here to support the renovation and the refurbishment of Rockwell School and Johnson School. With the completion in two thousand twenty, both of my children will be out of Rockwell and Johnson before it is complete. Currently, both of these buildings are out of date and are not up to code in many areas. These areas include access to those with disabilities. There isn't enough space in the current buildings to accommodate for these required interventions. If we do not do these renovations, we will eventually be out of compliance and parents, as well as others, could sue the town for IDEA issues. Building codes, the buildings are not up to current building codes or will soon be out of compliance. The electrical systems are at capacity, the roofs are at the end of their life. Again, another possibility for town lawsuits. Safety issues, both Rockwell and Johnson have an issue with the pickup and the buses being in the same location. That is a safety issue that could, again, be litigation. Most importantly, there's an issue with hazardous materials within the schools. Johnson School Gym was closed last year for a period of time because the tiles were falling down. As a parent, I'm concerned about the asbestos that might be within the schools, and the exposure to these other harmful chemicals. In addition, I'm concerned about the mold within these classrooms. If we do not renovate these schools, I fear that students and faculty will be exposed to these at unhealthy levels, and there is a huge possibility of lawsuits. Now, the reason I'm saying this is because I'm hearing people talk about tax increases. I'm hearing people talk about how expensive it's going to be. And you're right, it is going to be expensive. But I don't think some people have factored into it that there are lawsuits out there in the state of Connecticut that have caused other schools to have to be built for this reason, and those are a lot more expensive eventually than building this project. So thank you.
Frank Hislop, 5 Evergreen Drive. Just a lot about dollars and not too much about cents. We're in a state where we've created a problem for the town of Bethel through education. And basically, it's started with our university system. We are spending 40% of the budget of the state university system is coming out of us people right now. It's been buried for the last four or five years, because we've just been bonding, rebonding, bonding, rebonding. But guess what? Our bonding's done. Our rates are so down, so low now, we're rated junk just about. So therefore now, we can't afford, with all these monstrosity places we've built, these art centers, we built a police station now on White Street, we're spending hundreds of millions of dollars, hundreds, probably in the billions, bonding, bonding, rebonding. So what happened? Now we're going to yank $380 million from the actual teaching of the kids, because we built these monstrosities. We built these Taj Mahal-type things in the state. So now, $380 million is coming out of that. We can't spend that on teaching the kids. And that's the same basic thing we're going to do in Bethel. There's only X amount of money that's going to come out of Bethel. And we're going to spend all this money to make a Taj Mahal-type place with an amphitheater in two places, correct? ONG people?
That's part of the.
An amphitheater-type places? Now, these are not needs, these are wants. And this was all done back in the bonding days, when Connecticut bonded anything. What you showed us was what they did in them days. We're not there anymore. We're just about broke. Hartford's ready to file, two months. What happens when insolvency comes? Every contract with the state null and void, they renegotiate it, you can throw it out. So whatever the state tells you right now, don't believe it. That's the way our state charter's set up. Have fun. What about the kids? The $10,000 to $100,000 Puerto Rican kids are going to be here imminently. How are we going to pay for them? Who's going to pay for them? According with our media, that's what they're telling us. Who's going to pay for them? They're going to be ESL kids, a lot of special ed kids. The state's going to have to come up with tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars if this comes true.
A.J. Bernard, hi to the terrace. I don't have too much problem with.
Bring your mic for a little bit. Thank you.
I don't have too much trouble with the, excuse me, with the school system as requested. I've got a couple of questions on auxiliary. If it comes down to the state not having sufficient money, or for any reason whatsoever, what's the criteria, and who makes the decision to abort them?
It's contained in the resolution, right?
Yes, the resolution, I know it's long and it's complicated, but what it basically says is that if we don't get the grant monies that we have indicated in there from the state, then the project is at an end. What could happen, I don't, I can't speak for what happens if they say you've got the grant and then don't give it to us. We don't know. That's like everything, we don't know.
Who makes that decision? First selectman? Board of Ed? You?
What decision are you talking about?
Somebody has to say no. Who's it going to be?
Wait a minute. First thing is, it's built into the motion already, that if in fact we don't get the amounts of grants that are indicated in the motion, that was passed by the, and I believe it was unanimously passed by the Board of Finance, all right? What happens is the project ends all on its own. The only thing that we may be obligated for is a total of $3 million to start planning and doing the architectural plans and the bid documentation. And then if it's not passed by the legislature, then it ends. We pay off the architects and the artisans that have done the work, and the project's at an end.
Not the answer I was looking for. I'm looking for exactly who did it, but it looks like it's like when I lobbied in Hartford and Washington with the politicians. I'm a Realtor. I got answers that said, he's responsible. Anyway.
Sir, excuse me, sir. First off, I take offense to that. I spent a lot of time putting that motion together. It's a difficult motion, and it was something that we've never done in this town before. And it was done because both the Board of Education, the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Finance were concerned about what the costs were going to be to the people of Connecticut, from Connecticut to the people of Bethel. And what happened was, this was the best of what we could do. And I don't understand why you're going like this. It's pretty, it's pretty easy to figure out.
It's not a definite answer. I want an eight person or a department.
What do you want, answer? Do you want me to stand up and say, I'll make the decision? Is that what you're saying?
If, if it's within your prerogative.
Let me try to paraphrase it. If the grants do not come through, the resolution that's been passed kills it. It isn't up to any one person to say, okay, now we're not going to do it. The project ends. Is that correct? Is that a fair way to?
That is accurate.
That's 100% of the grant? I thought you had a program to split the schools in case the grant wasn't sufficient.
The reimbursement grant.
Well, yeah, what happens is, there is a, there is a split in the motion. And the reason for it is, is that in order to do Rockwell School, Johnson School has to be done first, because temporarily, and the Board of Ed people can correct me if I'm wrong. Temporarily, what's going to happen is, they're going to move the people from Rockwell into Johnson after it's done.
No, that's not accurate.
Okay.
It has to do with grade placement in third grade, so, and to provide swing space for the project. Meaning that as other parts of the building are being renovated, with the new grade configuration voted on by the Board of Education, it has to be built because Rockwell and Berry will become K-2 schools. Berry will become a pre-scape, pre-K-2 school. So that's the main reason why. But I believe to Mr. Lawler's point, the resolution has built into it, as he said, because we were all concerned about state reimbursement, all, the Board of Ed, the administration, the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Finance wanted to make sure that if we weren't put on the priority list, it's dead. If we're not, if we do not get the grant through the legislative, because it happens through legislative action, the project is dead. There's no decision made, it's just that we won't, the decision has been made. We will not proceed with the project if we do not get those minimum amount of reimbursement. So that's the way it would work.
Okay. My other concern is, notwithstanding all the taxes that's going around, is that the track record of the town hasn't been too good. This building had an overrun on it. We've got a police station that's got some strange money manipulation going on. We went for, and voted for brick and mortar, I think we're going to get a shoebox, and we're going at the big project. And the way it looks like, this town does not come up with the correct bonding in the first place, and that's another concern of my own. Thank you.
Rob Jackson, 26 Deepwood Drive. I want to thank the Board of Ed and everyone who's been involved in this in helping to obtain that grant, because this project wouldn't be possible without that grant money. We've got one shot at this, I believe, in order to get this done. Is there anything that we can do as Bethel taxpayers to help assure that we get this grant, or is it just up in the air?
At this point, Mrs. Yansky and, or Perkins Eastman and ONG have been to the state at least four times. We've gone up there, we've had meetings, we've invited Mr. Diamantis, the Director of Office of School Construction, he's come down, he's toured Johnson and Rockwell. As a result of those meetings, we are confident that we are going to be put on the priority list. That is not an issue at this point. You know, I think that the state budget situation will have to play out. But we also know at this point, and Representative Harding came to the Board of Finance meeting the other night, and he reaffirmed what we've been saying is, the ECS money has been, is obviously in question, no doubt. But the school construction monies have been there, and they are there. So if Bethel does not go for it, it'll go to another community. That's the reality. And I think that long-term, the reimburse, as Ben said, our concern is, because, you know, it isn't a perfect storm right now. It is a, it is a very awkward situation, even to be sitting up in here and having this discussion, given the state circumstances. But we're confident, and even Representative Harding said the other night, this money may even go away, and there will be no more reimbursement. So that's why we felt it was critical to keep the project as it is now.
Will that be conveyed when we send out the postcard to let people know that we do have one shot at this? Do you know?
We can't do that.
We can't do that?
The only thing we can send by law is a notification. It'll have the resolution, or the motion to be voted on, and the date and time. But by law, you can't put any other information in that. That might be considered law auditory.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you for your comments and discussion. I'm going to ask the town attorney to read the second, it's actually the second motion, and we will vote on the next two motions.
Shall the date of the machine vote for item number one take place on Tuesday, October 17, 2017?
Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion is on the floor to establish the date of the referendum as October 17, 2017.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second.
Who had the second?
Okay.
Scott Clayton.
Sorry.
Any discussion on the motion? And hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
There's a question.
Opposed?
No discussion.
Oh.
He's whistling.
All right, well, we've got another one, so can you read the second, read the third?
Shall the polling hours of the machine vote for item number one take place from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.?
Okay, I.
All right, wait a minute. Okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Go ahead, did you have a comment?
Yeah. You're saying that you want to have a referendum a week from today?
Correct.
That's not enough time for everyone to digest what they need to digest for a $65 million project. I mean, please, you're all adults in the back of the room, let's all realize, we need more time. We need more time.
Can I interrupt, please? I did not get that second on the resolution number three. John Kelly? Okay, thank you. Sorry, Bob.
Okay. I feel, you know, again, I feel like I'm speaking for thousands of voters who don't know what the hell's going on, and I know I'm right. If I did a poll, and I'm in the polling business, I would verify that. But anyways, the bottom line is, please, give us more time. Make it the 12th. Two days, I'll buy two days. But one week, that's just not enough time to let all these people go to the library, go to the website, you know? You guys clearly understand that. And so I beg you, I implore you, to do it for longer than a week. I mean, this is rushed on all levels. This is really just, you know, it goes against everything that I have experienced in this town. So I ask you as elected officials to reconsider, and please, a town attorney, reconsider doing it the 12th at the, you know, at the earliest. Not next Tuesday. It's just not enough time. I beg you.
Do you want to address that?
No.
Okay. All right, are there any other comments on the motion? Do you want to address the date, Dr. Carver? Why, you can leave that alone if you want. So we have a motion on the floor to establish the hours from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on the 17th of October. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. That concludes the agenda. This meeting is now recessed to a machine vote, one week from today on the 17th. I want to thank you for your comments and for your attendance.